Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call a city council meeting for October 15th. City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Bringle, here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesby.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Emery.
Here.
And Mayor Althoff.
Here. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've seen the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved?
A second.
That one? Motion by Bill and a second by Derek to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. Tonight is my privilege to make a presentation for the City of Cannon Falls to designate it a Purple Heart City. And we have a special guest here tonight. Richard Johnson from Red Wing. He's been going all over southern Minnesota, making a lot of the cities Purple Heart Cities. And he asked me about a month ago if Cannon Falls was interested. And I said, "You name the date." It's quite an honor. So, before we do that, I am gonna make, before I introduce Mr. Johnson, I am going to make the proclamation, a Purple Heart City proclamation for the City of Cannon Falls. Whereas the people of the City of Cannon Falls have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selfishly served their country and this community in the U.S. Armed Forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the City of Cannon Falls who have served in the Armed Forces have been vital to maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have gotten their lives, have given their lives while serving in the Armed Forces. And whereas many citizens of our community have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with the enemy force, construed as a singletary meritus act of essential service. I now therefore, John Althoff, as Mayor of the City of Cannon Falls, do proclaim the week of October 20th, 2019 officially designated as the week in the City of Cannon Falls to remember and recognize veterans who are the recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. And furthermore, the City of Cannon Falls does hereby adopt the standards necessary to be designated a Purple Heart City. With that, I'd like to introduce our guest, Richard Johnson. He's a retired U.S. Marine Corps Colonel, very active in his retirement. He, uh, he's had this project in southern Minnesota, designing Purple Heart Cities. And he's here tonight to make his presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be back in Cannon Falls again. Some of you probably are... May remember that I lived here for about a dozen years. And then, I don't know what I did, but you exalted me to Red Wing and they wouldn't accept me until the fifth ballot. But it's great to be back to this wonderful community. And it's wonderful that, to see that you're recognizing the men and women really who served. You've become a Purple Heart community, but it's a point of recognition. We say you recognize some who gave all. And then you recognize all who gave some. And then, as you think about it, you think about the men and women that were around those men when they were wounded. And then you can also give thought to the fact of the families and what they had to endure while their relatives were in the service. And so, this is a very significant event. The Department of Minnesota Military Order of the Purple Heart will present two free signs to Cannon Falls that is hung right below your city designation when you come into Cannon Falls. And incidentally, I know there's politics involved and everything, but the Department of Transportation has approved the hanging of the sign. And if you wish more, they are available also. And so, you will be with, next week, I will request these and you will join Zambroda, which has done the same thing. So with that, maybe we can get a picture of you there, Mayor, with the sign.
Our cub reporter with his phone. I take the better picture than ring that camera.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Well, it's good to see we've got a lot of representatives from our Legion and VFW in the crowd. And we actually have a Purple Heart recipient in the crowd, Chad Sheraton over there, too. Okay. Next up, we have Corey here from Nicomas Partners. Maybe Dave, you want to introduce him?
Corey, if you want to go up to the podium. Corey Ork is here representing Nicomas Partners to present his proposal, his company, to us relating to the opportunity to subscribe to Solar Gardens. So, Corey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor Althoff and council members of Cannon Falls, I know you guys have sat through two of these. And so, I'm gonna make mine brief, but I wanted to make sure I kind of go through everything just in case the others had left anything out that I felt was important. Just brief overview and then we'll get right to it. Nicomas Partners is a local company. We're headquartered right out of Minneapolis. We're founded by members that are all working here. There's seven of us. We focus on local energy generation, mainly community solar gardens at this point, but we also do onsite and offsite solar arrays. You know, we really believe that, you know, proper land, you know, the land use, the landowners have the right to use their land how they'd like. We'd like to provide more choice to the communities of where they get their energy. And with choice and competition comes, you know, better pricing. Our community solar gardens that we already have constructed this past year and this year, 17, located in these counties of Minnesota. The light blue ones are those that are eligible to subscribe, so we'll kind of go through. But we've put up a lot of gardens. Actually, I kind of gave you guys a late invite yesterday to a ribbon cutting that we had today down in Fairbowl, where we cut the ribbon on two gardens that have been constructed and one's turned on and one will soon be up and ready. As I mentioned in that email, those two gardens, the one garden is available to, for you to subscribe to, which is kind of rare. So it's, it's pretty cool if you guys want to take a look at it. Those subscribers specifically to that area or to the gardens that you guys would be involved in are Good Hugh County, which I believe in Dave's note to council that you've spoken to or gotten some feedback from. Fairbowl Public Schools is a major anchor subscriber to all of those gardens. And right here, Paul Althoff of Cannon Golf Club subscribed recently there. And then some other names, you know, that you can see there. So, you know, very briefly, solar gardens are built to generate electricity for 25 years. And that number 25 is based off of the contract the garden signs with Excel Energy. So that is how long Excel agrees to buy the energy and where that core fact starts with. Energy users, you know, we'll kind of go through the detail of how it works, but basically we have a landowner of which we lease the land. Sometimes we buy, but most of the times we lease the land for $1,000 per acre per year with an escalating rate. And we work with the community that the garden is in. We do a lot of community outreach. Most of the time you don't see our gardens and that's on purpose. We try and put them in places that are not right in the, you know, right of way, right, very noticeable. And Excel, we sign a contract as that garden operator with Excel. They agree to buy the energy from us and they pay us back in bill credits of which we can then monetize to Excel customers, i.e. subscribers. And that's how we get paid and how the garden is constructed based on those payments. So, very similar, I'm guessing, to what you were told. You know, briefly, the rules are, you know, in this program through Excel, a subscriber must be an Excel Retail customer. They can subscribe to 120% of their annual usage. And a subscriber cannot take up more than 40% of one garden, but you could subscribe to as many gardens as possible, as eligible. And again, you have to be, the subscriber must be in the same or adjacent county, so, of the garden. So like I said, those gardens, we have five in Rice County, right around Fairbowl, which you would be eligible for. We also have two in Dodge County, which you would also be eligible for. And the, oops, and the bill credits are delivered right to your bill via Excel Energy. You know, benefits, I think it's pretty known, you know, the local landowners receive revenue. We're gonna improve the grid reliability, even for those that are not technically subscribed to the garden. Those closest to the garden, the energy is just gonna go wherever it's consumed quickest. So, as we put up more of these distributed energy solar arrays, it just improves the grid for the surrounding areas by providing the energy should that large power plant or other plants go down, you know, provides that. These are all native pollinator friendly sites. They're very friendly. This is a picture of the community solar garden that we are at today. So it's, it's got pollinator friendly and this one will get a little trim. But we use agricultural fencing to make it blend in. If we have some concerns about neighbors and sightlines, we always reach out and put up some tree lines to kind of guard that or hide it, so to speak, from that, so no one's getting a glare or staring at it, you know, if they choose not to. The value of solar is what you guys have in front of you from all, from my understanding of all three proposals. And the value of solar is an unsubsidized rate tariff that the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, the state legislature, Excel Energy and other shareholders have all got together and said, "What is the value? What is the cost of solar?" And they've come to that agreement. And of course, you can see it's, it's based on a lot of avoided costs, whether that be environmental or distribution. Because again, these, these gardens are kind of where we live and where we use energy, a little closer. So, we save a lot of costs on that. And again, the Minnesota Department of Commerce, you know, regulates that with the Public Utilities Commission. So your subscription that we, or your proposal that we provided for you is very similar. It's the same penny savings as Novel has presented to you guys, which kind of equates very simply of a subscription based on 2.4 million kilowatt hours equals first year savings of $24,000 and $549,000 over the lifetime of the, of the contract. A little different that we'd like to point out, I think Dave mentioned why some of the savings numbers are different. We use a .5 degradation rate on our gardens and we use that because our panels are all warranted for that. It's just a panel warranted manufacturer rating of .5. And that's very, it's an industry standard all across the country and world. Every solar panel is rated at that or slightly less. There is no panel created today that is warranted at .25% degradation rate. So, if we wanted to compare the apple, if we wanted to make the deals more apples to apples, oranges to oranges, we can alter our degradation rate, you know, to .25% and you would see the same rating, same savings as the Novel proposal. That was the only difference that I could see in, in that. So, when we break it down to the proposal review, you're gonna see the exact same value of solar, the VOSS bill credit rate, which is locked in with Excel. That is what they have agreed upon to deliver. And our subscription rate in that next column is of course, one penny less than the VOSS rate. So, an estimated solar energy generated, excuse me, is the 2,400,000 kilowatt hours, which is your subscription. And that equates to $24,000. Now, the last two columns there are estimated. And the reason that they're estimated is because it's the sun, which is, the weather is the variable here. The first three columns are guaranteed in 25 year, or 20, year 24, that's your schedule, that's what you're getting. If the, if we subscribe you, the city, to the 2.4 million kilowatt hours and down the line in 10 years, you guys make some enhancements, some efficiencies and you use less than that, it doesn't matter. We've contracted to deliver you that 2.4 million dollar kilowatt hours. So, you know, certain manufacturers down in Fairbowl have older buildings. They need to make, you know, tighten up, you know, get some new windows, get some better HVAC. They said, "Hey, let's, let's wait, let's do that first." And I said, "No, let's, let's take advantage of your excess, you know, your usage there. We'll get you guys locked in at that amount of usage. And then when you guys make some efficiency changes, you kind of save, save twice." So, really what we're doing is we're using your buying power with Excel. And right today, currently, the city uses 2.4 million kilowatt hours or eligible to subscribe to. And if you use less in the years coming, doesn't matter, you're still delivered, still deliver that. So, your usage is really only needed at the time of contract. And then after that, it's decoupled from your garden, your garden subscription. So again, the billing is quite simple. It's, you'll receive, the administration will receive their bill, their Excel bills every month like they do now. On the bottom of it, you'll have an SRC code, which is the Solar Rewards Community Solar Program. It'll have the code of the garden you're subscribed to and the credits that were delivered that month. So it immediately is deducted from the bill. And then two weeks, three weeks, whatever we decide, you'll receive an invoice from Nicomas that will match that, meaning that we'll have the exact same bill credits delivered, the same numbers delivered for that month as Excel. And your subscription rate will be the one penny per kilowatt hour less. And so you'll see the savings. So, you know, jumping back to this slide, that estimated savings generated, which I'm sure everyone has told you, that is literally what you guys will take home as the savings. That's, that's not the subscription payments. That's what you guys take home. One, one difference with our offer is we also offer a signing bonus. And, you know, it's a little different than a slush fund, wink, wink. This is basically just a commitment that these gardens are being built. And we offer that as a commitment to you that we will build the gardens. And then as you, when you sign up, that enables us to keep building these gardens in the future. We do that for a lot of anchor subscribers like yourselves, which have large energy loads. And so really, it's just a matter of, right away, you guys are saving from day one. And, you know, we're, we're on the clock to deliver what we, what we said we're going to do. And that's what that commitment is, is meant to show, that's what that bonus is, is meant to show. So, if anybody has any questions, it's probably very similar, you know, to what you've been hearing. It's the full penny savings. And again, the degradation rate on our listings is based on the manufacturer equipment. But again, that can be changed, so, you know, if you wanted that. But the estimated savings, of course, are very conservative. We expect that, you know, you would, we would generate more of, you know, of those numbers. Those are what the bank and, and finance years, you know, lend against. So those are extremely conservative. So, you know, those numbers would most likely grow as far as savings for the city. So, and like Dave said, we've, you know, contracted with Good Hugh County just recently with an RFP, much like kind of you guys are doing, where they have multiple vendors in. Fairbowl Public Schools, we have plenty of references should you guys want to use them in your decision making. So that's all I have, yes.
So when you first start, or let's say we go with you.
Yes.
To when it's up and ready.
Yes.
How long's that?
Yes. So if you guys were to commit to us, you know, at the next meeting, let's say, we would slide you into the garden that we had the ribbon cutting for, that's going to be up and running, delivering bill credits in the March-April timeframe. Now, you would get, you would most likely get 40% of that garden, which would equate to, you know, 600,000 kilowatt hours. So it would be a portion of your total. We would get you in right away. And then the next gardens that we have coming up in the next summer that we're building in 2020, we would then fulfill that subscription at that point. So you guys have the advantage of just having a garden that's kind of, has some space in it now or, you know, we can kind of move, allocate some other subscribers that we've already, you know, built gardens for and we can kind of get you in right away.
So we would probably be in three gardens, is what you're saying?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
With 40 and one at 20, maybe?
Exactly. It'd be kind of, yeah. It, because you can be a max 40%, so.
Okay.
Yeah. It'd be that 600, about, just under 700,000 kilowatts is 40% of a garden. So, yeah, like the three and a little bit, so.
Hey, what's the, what's our liability?
Your liability, the risks are, you are not able to generate your, if you signed up for the 120%, your total load, you are not able to generate your own electricity onsite. And that's per the Excel Energy Community Solar Program. So if you have any plans of onsite, you know, putting your own solar array or a windmill on, you know, city land and generating your own energy, you know, you have to keep kind of open usage in order to generate that. The risk of, if the garden goes down, so you guys are subscribed in a hypothetical, you're receiving bill credits, tornado rips through, destroys the community solar garden, you guys do not receive bill credits that month because the garden is not producing. And thereby, you don't receive an invoice from us because the garden is not generating. We only bill when you guys get bill credits. We don't, you only pay when you save. So you've received bill credits and then you receive an invoice from us. So if you don't receive bill credits that month, then you don't. So the garden is torn up, it's down for three weeks. Believe me, we're just as worried about this as you are. We get some crews in there, get it back up and running. What you've risked is you've lost savings for those, that time.
Tell me about the invoice.
So the invoice would, we use the same data that Excel, Excel Energy's portal uses. So when Excel Energy matches your subscription to the garden that it's monitoring, it has an Excel meter right onsite, it generates, you know, the numbers and puts it on the Excel bill. We get the same report for any garden that we are owning and operating. So we match up the bill credits that, you know, XYZ premises from Cannon Falls has received. And we make sure that those are exactly the same numbers. And then we send out that subscription invoice to the city.
Okay. So, in essence, and I'm sorry if I'm sounding stupid.
No.
The invoice you send us is our electric bill?
No, that's not correct.
The credit.
It's, you'll receive your electric bill with bill credits already deducted off of that bill. So, in a case of sometime, most likely you'll get a $0 bill with excess of credits on it. Then you'll receive an invoice from us that matches that bill with that penny per kilowatt less. So basically, we're, it's a 10 cent coupon that you guys get. We send you a bill for nine cents and you, and you pay the subscription. So you're always up. You're never gonna pay for something you didn't get. In some cases, and it's mainly with schools, the one, not risk, but challenge is some schools that have a lot of energy throughout kind of the school year. And then in the summer, they may not use a lot of energy. In the summer, we produce a lot of energy, so they'll receive a lot of bill credits, which their bills will be zero with a lot of credits that just keep moving and keep getting forwarded to the months. So you will have to pay, you know, in that case, that school would pay for, you know, would pay out cash without being able to monetize that cash. At the end of the year, if you have excess of bill credits, then Excel just cuts you a check for the cash. So, the, does that make sense? Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, in your case, since you guys operate, you know, I've seen your, you guys operate at a very stable electric usage, you'll never have that issue. You'll just, you know, get some bill credits, they'll be put on the bill and, you know, pay. So it'll be very seamless. There's no changes to facilities, there's no upfront costs, so.
So, there's been some misconception within the community here on solar gardens.
Sure.
One, we do not have any monetary cost upfront.
Correct.
And also, we are not, as a city, building our own solar garden and using up land.
Correct.
That seems to be the big question from some of the community, so.
Yeah. As far as our gardens, now I can't speak to other developers, but the gardens that we build, that we're building are not in Cannon Falls proper or around Cannon Falls. And one point of note of that, if that is a concern to citizens, you know, I can't speak for other developers, but certainly accord to our landowners is it's low yield land. It's land that isn't just not producing corn and soybean and, or, you know, they just cannot hold on to that land and farm it. And this is just a great way to keep a portion of the land. So each of these gardens is on five acres of land. You know, most of our landowners have 10, 20 acres of land. So we're using up a portion that they just can't get anything out of. And it allows them to generate revenue and keep the, keep the, keep the farm.
I think the questions I've seen more are to this, you know, like, people have actually used the word scam for this whole system, you know, of all that.
Yep, yep.
How much are we investing and we're not investing anything?
That's right.
It's hard to believe.
No, absolutely. It is, it's the too good to be true. There's, there's no other way that you can save money with Excel Energy without changing your behavior. This is the only way you can do it, right? You really can't. There's no other way. The, you asked, I'm sorry, you asked what was a risk? The risk could be a better looking salesman comes here in two to three years and says, "We've got cold fusion and I can save you even this much more, you know, on your energy bill." And you guys have said, "Well, we've already signed up with community solar, so we can't." That, that is the risk. It's an opportunity cost, you know, and then the argument, of course, is if you decline to do it now, the opportunity cost... to do it now, the opportunity cost of not saving the next three years, or, you know, you're going to save $60,000 the next three years. So if you waited or wanted something better, you would miss out on that savings.
Does that include the $24,000 bonus?
No, it doesn't.
So that's like a bonus month?
Yes, exactly. And that's how we calculate it. It's really not just to throw, it's really saying that in the case of, you know, you guys would get in sooner, but in a lot of, in most cases, these gardens and subscribers are kind of put together in, in correlation at the same time in parity. So most of the time, the gardens aren't up and running, and we just go and subscribe, and you get in right away. So really, what we're just saying is, is we're going to get you guys saving right away, we're going to use the first year as the number, right? And just say, let's get it, let's get that in hand. You guys have saved right away, you're already up, right? And that also says, if we ever just run away and never come back, you guys aren't out with anything, you're up dollars already. And we're also, we want to get those built, and because we've committed that money to you already, we're, we've got skin in the game here, and, and we're committed. So that's really.
Because this is how you get your financing done, right?
That's correct.
It's by having us subscribe.
That's correct. Just about, you know, every good developer needs 80% of a garden to be subscribed with good credit, you know, subscribers and kind of be locked in in order for that, then to move forward and get financing, whether it's local banks like Franzen or large banks on the coast to, to get these things built, so.
Is, is there a buyout option?
There is a, there is like a buyout option if one day, 10 years in, you guys just, just want out. It's essentially just to pay the savings that you would receive back, or pay the savings that you have not yet given. So it's a very harsh penalty, to be completely honest with you. But there are, you know, like, other terms. So if, I, I don't know exactly which premises we subscribe with yours, but if the police department was its own premise and you moved it, moved facilities, or, you know, wherever it moved it to a place that was not in Excel territory, that's like a default clause, and you would be able to get out with a minimum payment to help, you know, we would just have to fill that void of subscription. So there are ways, City of Farmington has a hockey rink that they've subscribed their energy to. They're going to close the hockey rink, you know, it's scheduled to close in five years. And so when that premise goes away, that's kind of an out of the contract where they just kind of help, or, or maybe they'll transfer it to the new facility. But if they have, you know, facilities outside of Excel Energy territory. So, yeah. Those are good questions.
Any other questions?
I've had the same thing, Mary Jill.
Yeah.
Falling for the solar scam.
Yeah, and I just don't think.
It's kind of a no brainer, right?
Yeah, I just don't think that's what this is.
No, it is. It's the, it's, it's a, it's a pretty easy, and whoever, you know.
And cash back on your credit card.
That's right.
You know, really.
That's right. And that's why, really, just, you're using your buying power with Excel. Excel is mandated, mandated to build these clean energy projects. And they just need to know that their customers are using that amount of energy, and that's what we're using your buying power with. And they'll, it's discounted rate because it's cheaper energy to, to build and to operate than, say, a coal plant or a gas. So.
Right.
That's basically it. But available for questions, the agreement has been delivered to Dave. It's a pretty upfront agreement. If you guys have questions or little edits, or, you know, things that your city attorney has, we're very open to, to answering those questions. But I'll, I know we got a full room, and I don't think they came for me, so.
Oh, yeah, they did.
So I appreciate your time. And again, really, if you have any questions, we're very open, and our references are very open to talking.
Okay.
If you need some help or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Say, Dave, just a question. We've had three presentations. Do we have the copies of the contracts from all three?
Two.
And I, and before our next meeting, you're gonna, not only yourself, but have Roger.
I don't know that I would like him to review all three contracts.
Okay.
So I'd make some judgment as to which three seems to feel to be the best fit for us to review that. The contracts have similar language, but you heard from the novel, the novel's considered considerably less pages than yours, and I guess, doesn't make it better, it's just shorter. So I don't know that I want to have Roger review all three of those.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to move forward and try to get that decision. Talk possibly if we're going to meet again on November 6th or other day, other than November 5th, that we can maybe bring something back with the recommendation.
Maybe the council would like to review those three and, you know, so we can talk about it at the work session at the next meeting, so. Okay?
Scratching my head, trying to figure out if we have fewer council meetings per year of this way to help us or.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Before I start, we have deleted item D. A application for final payment of eligibility in court. Greg Anderson cannot be here tonight, and he's got, he wants to explain that, so we're going to put that on the agenda at the next meeting. So item D is off of there. Okay, the consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you in the audience and at home, I'm going to go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending October 10, 2019. Item B, minute meetings for the October 1, 2019 city council meeting. Item C, minute meetings for the October 1, 2019 city council work session. Item E, resolution 2445, accepting a grant of $3,000 from Compeer Financial for the purchase of ambulance equipment. Item F, approve the revised job description for the utility billing clerk, receptionist, office assistant position. Item G, resolution 2446, accepting a grant of $2,000 from Minnesota Energy Resources slash Wisconsin Public Service Foundation to the Cannon Falls Fire Department. Item H, resolution 2447, accepting a donation of $1,500 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association to the fire department. And item I is the handgun replacement. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'd like to bring down item F.
Okay, we will make item F, number 7A, the approved revised job description. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to put, pull down item I.
Okay, we'll make that on my item 7B, and that's the handgun replacement. Anything else? I'm going to pull down item A, make that 7C, just and correct claims. Anything else? I take a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exceptions of items A, F, and I.
I'll second.
Motion by Morris, a second by Bill, to accept the consent agenda with those three exceptions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into council business, and that'll bring up the, yeah, the consent agenda items. Now, Mary Jill, you pulled down approving that job description for the clerk.
Yeah. I think this is something we've been kind of talking around for a while, but haven't actually discussed. Obviously, it's been in the personnel committee. My question is, of the, for the salaries and benefits of this person, whoever it is, whether it's an internal candidate, always welcome to apply, or someone from the outside coming in, is there going to be a percentage allocated to different departments? I mean, obviously, the utility billing is public works, and the other is probably general office, is that correct? Do you have a percentage there, or?
You know, we're still talking about a, an allocation of the percentages. This is the position that was most recently housed in the public works department, and all of the cost related to this position was paid for by the public utilities department, water, wastewater fees. Deciding to move or recommending to move that position into city hall to add some administrative duties in city hall to this is still a little bit of a moving target, because we anticipate certainly in the first year with a new person, that there's not really going to be much other than public works associated with this position. But I think moving forward in terms of sharing some receptionist duties, sharing some administrative tasks outside of public works, we certainly want to make that a part of this position. So 20%, I mean, and again, the first year, I don't, I just don't think it's going to be much in the first year. But going forward, once a person gets up and running and, and, you know, capable of handling the utility billing function, which is a lion's share of this position right now, then maybe we'd see where that goes and, and split from there.
So to begin with, just kind of a crap shoot, or 100%?
I'm just, I'm just picking my number, Mary Jill, you know, 20% feels like maybe a number to start with.
Okay. All right. That's fair.
Is this position, the language revised job, is this going to be something, a new position, a full-time hire? Is this reallocation of bodies at city hall?
It's what we politely refer to as Afton's former position. So the lion's share on a percentage basis of this position that Afton used to be employed as is really utility billing, public works, administration. That's the greatest percentage of, of this position. Here, adding some administrative and receptionist duties goes hand in hand with Lois Berg and what she does for us. She's a motor vehicle clerk, receptionist, administrative assistant. This is a utility billing clerk, receptionist, administrative assistant. So what we're trying to do is balance the, the, the workloads in terms of people coming in off of the street, phone calls, et cetera, that may or may not be just utility based, or may or may not be just motor vehicle based. So we're trying to match that up with, with Lois in her current position as motor vehicle clerk, this new hire as utility billing clerk, backed up then by Diane Howard. So we're, we're trying to better manage the number of calls and people that are coming in and out of this building each and every day. And it may be for utility billing, it may be for a license, it may be for motor vehicle, it may be to see me, it may be something totally different than that. So that's what we're trying to do here with this position. And that's a little bit different, because obviously, it's in this building, not the public works building. There was a period of time, even since I've been here, where, where Afton was in this building with this position, but years ago, was, was brought back to, to public works. So we're bringing it back out of public works into this building.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of issues with this. I'm not so sure that I would want to take that position out of the public works area down there. I know Afton did a lot for them, and I think taking that position away is going to hurt them, and they're already pretty short-staffed. Also, though, with not knowing what we're going to be doing with the police budget, I'm not so sure we should be looking to hire anyone to fill this until we decide what we're doing with that, since that's a potential area that someone could slide into if the budget did get lowered. So for those two reasons, I think we should hold off on doing anything, just at least till we get a, we get the police thing figured out. And like I said, I, I'd like to hear from Wes to hear what he thinks about taking this position out of there, because I know they did a lot down there to help those guys out. That's all.
Well, Derek, I'll respectively disagree with you. The person who's currently handling basically our utility billing, our water bills, we have someone in this building doing that in addition to their current job, and that's an awful lot to ask for one person. And if we hold off and we wait another three or five weeks, that's, that's putting a lot of pressure on that one person.
I think what he's saying is maybe that person should stay down at the public works building.
That's part of his.
That's part of it, yeah.
Part of it.
Now, that's also a safety issue that I was never happy with.
That always bothered me, having Afton down there by herself.
Yeah, because at the time, when the building's empty, and she's the only one there, that was a, that was a concern of mine.
It's better to have the people come up here.
Yeah. If the public works guy's got to come here to do something or whatever, they're always out and about anyhow, going to different assignments within the city.
Yeah.
Coming here is not a lot.
You may be right. I, I do think we should hear what Wes has to say about it.
Yeah, but to your other, to your other point, maybe we should delay this until after the budget meeting.
Well, or.
Maybe we should.
At least we should talk to Wes about it.
Yeah.
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 Before we. Respond to the Wes comment, to Derek. I've met with Wes on several occasions, I've met with the entire public works department, we have talked about this. From the customer's perspective, we feel, and I think they agree, as public work employees, that logistically, this is a better location for the customer. It's a change for them, though. But the honest truth is that, that we see one of the public works operators almost daily at one point or another in and out of this building. So it's, it's going to take some adjustment on their part, and they haven't, at this point, told me that they have great opposition to doing this. And there's a, a good side and a bad side. You know, to take the public out of their operation is a safety benefit, I think, to the customers that have been going down there in the past. To remove them out of the yard is probably arguably a good thing. And I think logistically, even with Wes and, and his guys, that they understand that if this person's going to be here, they're around this building a lot each and every day, and this person's going to be accessible to them. Is there a change? Yes. Logistically, is it a negative for them? I'm not sure that it is, and I think that's what they would say. So I have had conversations with them, and I don't know that that's an issue.
Do we want to pull it off and wait on it?
Well, I, I think. We should wait till the police thing, for sure.
Yeah.
Gets figured out.
Let's take that off, then, for tonight.
That's fine.
See a motion?
You need a motion for that, to take it off the agenda?
Or no?
Do we need a motion to remove that?
There just won't be a motion.
No action?
No action.
No action.
Okay.
Right, no action.
Okay. Bill, handgun replacement.
Yeah, similar to the argument we just talked about, this should be taken off till, I think, the second meeting in November to see how our budget process goes through. And, you know, there's, there's no harm in waiting. I don't know what the rush was on this. This was first brought up in February, and nothing was brought to the council then. So waiting a couple more meetings is not going to hurt anything.
So we typically, bigger purchases want to bring that to council to get their two cents on it. So what we did is, when we were working on the budget for 2020, is how can, can we still work this in? Ultimately, my sites personally, they should have been replaced two years ago. And I really pushed for that to be on the 2019 budget. It didn't happen. Things get pushed down the road. This is getting pushed down the road to 2020. In order to meet the goals that the council has set for us, we would like to make this purchase in this year, which we believe that the money's there. We found some areas in our training budget that it could easily happen if we push this off. What we did is we sent to our supplier, said, hey, can you refresh this? The value of our current guns went down $10 a gun. She said she expects them to go down $30 probably by the first of the year. But that, right now, we have a 30-day agreement with the $10 less than we had in February that we could make that purchase. After that 30 days, we could lose another $30 a gun. So right now, night sights are about $100, they're $25 to install. I got ahold of a vendor today that said they'd do it for $124 a gun. The cost to replace the guns in the plan that we proposed would be $197. So it's kind of a no-brainer to us, let's just get it done right now. We can, we have a qualification date set for next week. If they can get us the guns by then, that would be perfect for us, but that's why we wanted to bring it to the council, and it's your thoughts.
Right, but you're saying there might be a change at the first of the year. I'm not asking to wait till the first of the year, I'm just asking like we do with the previous item, let's wait a couple of meetings, and then see what happens as we Let's wait a couple of meetings and then see what happens as we debate the police budget, and then we can deal with this.
As long as you order them this year, you get that price?
Fine, we can still do it.
Well, the money's in our 2019 budget.
No, I know, but...
I don't know what the discussion would be for 2020's budget.
No, I guess the question, I think what Bill was getting at was, if we waited a couple of weeks just to see how this was all working out, just like we're talking with a lot of things here, it's not going to affect you being able to get the guns this year. You'd be able to order them the next day, and they, or would you?
Our quote's good for 30 days.
Okay, all right.
When's the 30 days?
But it's our 2019 budget.
No, I get it.
It has nothing to do with our 2020 budget, other than we're trying to take dollars off of that. The sooner we do it, the sooner we can get into these guns.
Got it.
Well, like I say, there's no rush. Let's do the, be all our budgeting, not just the police department, but other departments. Get that settled, and we'll know after our next meeting, when we have the work session on budget stuff. We'll know. We'll know where the consensus is.
Right, but if the cost is in their 2019 budget, and these are sites that should be updated possibly two years ago, and they're already trying to be fiscally responsible with upgrading or the changing of their guns, why can't we just approve them up and do that now?
Because the thing is, what's a total cost, total? I'm so...
Twenty-three something, wasn't it?
Twenty-three...
Two thousand three hundred sixty-seven.
So we have some guns that will get a $250 credit, some are 255, and one of our other guns apparently is a rare gun, will get 264.
Plus the savings on the ammo, correct?
We're not addressing the ammo right now. I mean, the ammo's going to be, we have to buy 40 regardless. We can probably get enough through this year if we have to, but we would just be buying it into this year.
Well, we haven't mentioned, there's going to be a shortage of that 40-caliber ammo, too. It's...
Yeah, and that's why...
Is a nine-millimeter a lot easier to come by?
That's why 40-cal, most departments are going away from it. The nine millimeters, they've improved the bullet trajectory and stuff, that it's comparable to a 40. But yes, 40 is more in demand, therefore it costs more. Will that happen in five years, that nine will become, well, right now, it's more affordable to buy nines?
Right.
So my other question is, why is this coming up now conveniently during a budgetary question when you guys dealt, in theory, in your notes here, you dealt with this in February?
Yeah, I think what he's trying to do, Bill, is move it into the 2019 budget year.
That's fine, but we still have time to do that.
Can I make a motion to approve, item I, the handgun replacement?
Second.
There's been a motion to approve the handgun replacement by Matt and a second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, item 7C. I just had a couple items on page one of the just claims, and that was on the 2008 Street project. It was a check for $1,387 to SCH. Could you explain, Lenell, what that was?
2018.
What page is that on?
It's on page one of the just claims.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. Oof, I can't read that.
It was, for the 2018 Street improvements, and it was paid to SCH. There was a check for $1,287 and $8771.
Those are engineering costs. I believe those invoices were from earlier this year that were being held due to some questions, but it was related to the 2018 Street Improvement Project.
Okay. I just, it comes to mind, there was a mistake made up there by the school at 2050, $200 bill for that cul-de-sac that was wrong. I don't know if that was part of it or if that...
We don't have a detailed invoice that describes exactly what was worked on. It's, the bills come in with the hourly rate per individual that works on it by category. We don't necessarily have a name of the individual, but it's not by what they worked on within the project. It's just the general overall project.
Well, I think that's wrong.
That's wrong.
But...
The cul-de-sac issue was not a change order, and so there was nothing to associate it, separate it from the rest of the project. So there was no way for us to see a separated amount.
So you're saying this could have been any part of the project?
Yes.
We can ask Greg to explain that when he comes back on...
I will, yeah. Let's bring, well, if he's coming, let's ask him about that.
Yeah.
Well, what do we do about it for now? Do we hold off paying?
It's been paid, Greg.
Or has it been paid already?
I honestly don't know if that check has been issued or not. It may have been because it was an old invoice, and we, when they're old invoices, we do try to get those out because we have some statutory requirements that we're supposed to meet. And so we try to get those out as quickly as we can if they're late.
Okay.
I don't know if I want to approve that, but can we approve the just claims without that?
If it hasn't been issued already...
We don't know if the check's been issued or not.
If it's been paid, we can't do much.
I've seen the check stub, so I know the check has been printed. I don't know if it's been mailed. I can't answer that right now. You can...
I'll tell you what, let's approve it, and I'll make a motion that we accept it. But let's have Greg explain it to us at the next meeting. Maybe he gives a refund or something, if that's the case. I'll make a motion to accept that, then.
I don't think you can make a motion.
You are not allowed to make a motion.
I won't, yeah. Somebody else may.
Stay out of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second it.
Motion by Bill, and second by Morris to approve the just claims. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we're going to move into reports. I don't think anybody's from the chamber. Kyle's had shoulder surgery, and she's going to be out three weeks. I can maybe put a plug in for the Halloween candy giveaway. That's going to be October 31st, I think, Thursday, four o'clock downtown.
Usually like four to five.
Four to five, yeah.
You need any sugar?
You need any sugar, that's the place to be. I think she mentioned they had $650, $700 kids last year. And if it's a good day, they'll have that many again this year. I'll put a plug in that for the chamber for you. The EDA, Dave Juana, we met on October 9th. Want to give us an update there?
Yeah, I can give two updates, and you can add if you like.
Yeah.
One thing, just want to, are we going to meet November 6th, which is Wednesday, rather than November...
Yeah, we can't meet on the 5th.
So we agreed on November 6th?
November 6th?
Yeah, we did approve that to meet, except our next meeting's November 6th.
We're going to want to confirm we're meeting on the 6th.
There's an election here on the 5th.
Because that has to do with one of my reports from the EDA. So I'll assume we're meeting November 6th?
Yep.
On November 6th, the recommendation that the EDA made at their meeting, at their last meeting, pertaining to a industrial development project in the industrial park that we've been working on for several months. The good news is, it appears like it's going to happen. We've continued the negotiation, brought the project to the EDA at their last meeting, and there's two issues that will come to this body related to this project. One pertains to the current policy and fees for the sewer and water access charges, and the other one pertains to incentive financing under tax increment, both of which would be decisions by the council. So what the EDA is recommending for this particular project is that there be an adjustment and some forgiveness on the water access charge for this project. What's happening is a large water service is putting in to provide a fire protection system in the building. Not being provided to provide usable water for operation manufacturing. It's only there for the fire safety. So with that larger water service at the six-inch size, it's a little bit over the $30,000 connection. We don't see a lot of those. So that cost, that $30,000, has been what we've talked about with the prospect and with the EDA coming to you to suggest that we find a way to waive some portion of the sewer water access charge for this project, not just in terms of fairness of what the water and service is being used for, but also as an incentive, a way to incentivize this project. So there will be an official report request given to you on November 6th from the EDA on how to deal with primarily the water charge on this project. The second thing on the tax increment financing, the recommendation of the EDA to the council, which we'll talk about on November 6th, is that we look at a nine-year tax increment financing district for this project. If we're going to go ahead, we would obviously develop the tax increment financing plan. There would be a public hearing before the council. You would be asked sometime later this year, early next year, to consider approval for the tax increment financing request on this project. The reason I bring it to the city council in this kind of format is that the prospect, the owner of the business that's proposing to buy land and develop in the industrial park, is proposing to do this in two stages. In 2019, current year, it would be to buy a nine-acre piece of property in the industrial park for the project. That would happen in 2019. The building would be built next year. We're really tied to the building side of this equation. The water access charge, sewer access charge, tax increment, that's building, not the land. So what the developer of this property is looking for us to do is to get some sense of willingness of the city council to move forward the incentive package, go through the process to consider adoption of the package. And this is what the EDA is going to be recommending or has recommended at their meeting that I will bring to you for official action on November 6th. So it's kind of a long ways to get there, but I wanted to give you some advanced indication that this is coming. If you've got any questions interim, please, you know, ask me about that, and we'll go through the details then on November 6th. But that's coming as a result of the EDA meeting.
Is this a manufacturing concern or warehousing?
No, it's not a manufacturing operation. It's an industrial-like user, but serves industrial-type businesses, yep.
Is it land that we own?
It's not land that we own. It's not EDA-owned land. It's unprivately owned land.
Privately owned.
So it's the nine-acre piece directly west of Lawrence Meats, across the street.
Right, across the street, yeah.
And then would it be put into the industrial park, or is it considered to be in there already, just owned by someone else?
It's in the industrial park already. So the land is served with streets, sewer water. It's a corner lot. We've seen the preliminary development plans. We have no zoning or land use issues with respect to what's being proposed here. So that all fits nicely.
That works, okay.
So it's a good business, we feel. It's a credible business. It's not a brand-new business. It's a family-owned business. We think on the EDA side, based on our due diligence, that this is a good fit for the industrial park in Cannon Falls.
Any idea of how many employees there will be?
They've got about 30 now, and they'll be coming and going in this location.
That's good.
Second thing, and you've probably all noticed this, is the Lee Chevrolet building is gone, noticeably gone.
Yes.
So we got that done. And the EDA now will be moving forward to the next phase of consideration on that site. We still have some soil contamination issues to deal with in the future, but we're not addressing those right now. But what we want to move forward is that this will be interim parking for now, but we'll move forward then looking for private interest to redevelop that property. So that's kind of the direction that we'll take with the EDA. But the building's gone. That went well for us, and we're happy that we got it at least to this stage. So those are the two main project-related conversations that we had at the last EDA meeting. I don't know, Morris or John, if there's anything else. We had a fairly large agenda, but those are probably the two most significant conversations.
Had somebody come and say, well, she said I've been driving by that building for around 50 years. I don't know where to turn now. The bigger space on the building is gone than I anticipated. Well, briefly, we've talked about Cannon Ball, and we're meeting with the county here some, yes, this month?
24th.
24th. So ongoing discussions with the Cannon Ball property, so we'll see what happens there, too.
Right.
I should say, we had a conversation with Greg Jablonsky. 120 acres, the old Schweig farm up on the hill, and see if he's interested in getting some development going. We had to talk to him anyhow, where there's a problem on Grove Street with the water, and maybe possibly purchasing a few acres or divert some water, so. But we had a good conversation. It looks like he and his boys are maybe getting something together. We'll see what happens there.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Okay, EDA, how about personnel? Back to Dave.
We discussed the utility clerk position. In addition to that, yesterday was the final day to accept applications for the maintenance-to position, and it looks like we've got some good, solid possibilities there. Personnel committee meeting next week to go through those applications and proceed from there. And the personnel committee also talked about trying to step up efforts to advertise for the replacement, full-time replacement of the Public Works Director, so we'll continue to look at that.
Okay. Library board, Nicole?
We didn't have a quorum last night, but we had a good chat, and...
Solved the world's problems, Nicole.
He solved all of the world's problems. But from it, I have my draft flyer for knit along with Mary Jill. She's going to volunteer time to come to the library on Saturdays.
Who?
Her. And teach people how to knit. You just have to bring your own yarn and knitting tools. And it's going to be by the fireplace starting November 9th from 11:00 to 2:00. So every Saturday through the end of the year, we'll just see how it goes. The fireplace is nice and warm. It's a cozy spot, just another program, and thank you, Mary Jill, for offering. So that's all I have from our kind of non-existent board meeting. The next library board meeting is going to be, usually they're the second Tuesday, sorry, second Monday of the month, but that, the November meeting would then fall on Veterans Day, which is a state holiday, and we're closed. So it's going to be the following Monday, the 20, I forgot already, the 18th.
18th?
Yeah.
Good. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Lenell for giving us some numbers so that we can work on our 2020 budget, so we're working diligently on that. Just want to let the public know, on the 10th, so it would have been last Thursday, we had two burglaries in progress actually occur at the same time. In one of them, the suspect was identified, in the other one, nobody was identified. Fortunately, in that matter, nothing was missing. But we want to remind citizens to start locking your windows and doors. It's getting cold regardless, so there's people out there that are trying to take advantage of us, and we want to stay a foot ahead of them. The second part of that, if you see somebody creeping down your alleys, these were at 2:30 in the morning.
Oh, my gosh.
Interestingly enough, that exact time is the officers going to the second burglary in progress. Goodhue County is involved with a pursuit through town with an individual that we posted on Facebook that has been apprehended since then. So even though we wanted help from the county with these in-progress burglaries, guess where they were? They were busy going through town at a high rate of speed. So we just want to thank the Goodhue Place Department, who was able to come up and assist us with the burglary in progress, so we thank them for that, so. And, yep, we're looking forward to the trick-or-trot. Once again, some police officers will be dressed as police officers to help the little ones across the street, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Lenell. All right, Dave?
Council all has a letter from Superintendent Sampson regarding strategic planning process that they're undertaking beginning October 21st. You're all invited as counselors to attend that meeting, and would encourage you to do so if you can. And secondly, you've got a graphic that looks like this, a yellow graphic, Sandstone. The Southeast Minnesota Multi-County HRA and Goodhue County are continually working together to try to quote-unquote "fix" what ails the Sandstone Ridge development. And one of the things that ails the development is bad title in the land. And because Goodhue County had sold a portion, primarily the east portion around the area that's highlighted in yellow here, sold that land to the Multi-County HRA, Southeast Minnesota Multi-County HRA, they sold that land to them for the development of affordable housing. And the HRA later discovered that affordable housing was not economically feasible in this area due to soil conditions. So the Multi-County HRA, Goodhue County, are moving forward with trying to clean up some of the title issues in this area to position it for some type of development, perhaps other than affordable housing, because honestly, the soil conditions there are such that it's just not in the cards to do that right now. So we were brought in, we, the city, were brought in for a conversation with the county and the HRA and their attorneys to discuss whether or not we, as a city, would be willing and able to vacate our easements, vacate our right-of-ways, get rid of any public interest that we might have in this property. And the answer is yes, we probably can do that, but we do have major utility lines through this area that are not going to be relocated, are not going to be abandoned, are functioning, that we're going to have to retain public easements on. And so the county and the HRA understand that. But what they want to do is come and meet with us potentially on November 13th at a work session, where they would come to us, come to the city of Cannon Falls, and talk specifically about not just what they're trying to do with title, but also have a conversation with the city about the future of the Sandstone Ridge Park. That was a dedicated land area for a public park. It's not been developed as a park. It's not ready to be a park. It could be a park. But the question's going to be, do we, as a city, want to retain that as a park? So that's a question to the council that they would like you to address because it's part of this process to, quote, "change things and clean things up." The second thing is whether or not Sandstone Road, Decorah Drive, would continue to serve as road access to County Road 25 for the Cedar Hills area, the Bluff Drive area. That's maybe a little bit more complicated of a question. Yes, the road's not really functioning. Yes, the road's not really functional now, but is the city prepared to get rid of street connection, the alternative way in and out of this subdivision to County 25 or not? And that's going to take some conversation. So what the HRA and the county has asked John and I to do is to come back to the council, see if there's an ability in the near term, just suggesting Wednesday, November 13, is a time where the HRA could come and Goodhue County could come and present what they did to John and I last week, and have a conversation, certainly about what they're trying to do, but also specifically as it pertains to the park and the street connection back to 25. So they're really looking for some input, because without kind of some positions taken by the city, depending on what we decide to do, they may or may not be able to really clean this property up. The land use out there that's being talked about still, was talked about several years ago even with novel solar, about building a solar park out there, that's still a possibility, but to get there is going to take some cleanup of the land, some maneuvering by Goodhue County under state law, and some adjustments with the HRA. We're just kind of tagging along on some of these things. But if there was going to be solar development, if there was going to be a county park, that was talked, or a city park, or some other public use out there, the plan can be revised to accommodate other kinds of public use, but if it's not going to be private redevelopment, you know, there's not a lot of potential out there for anything other than public development, so it takes a reconfiguration of the whole development.
Isn't it going to be, I'm sorry, isn't it going to be, I mean, considering what the soil is like out there, and I took a couple novel trips on the roads while you still could, wouldn't we have the same soil issues trying to keep the streets drivable and et cetera?
If we're going to keep the streets, the streets are going to have to be improved.
Yeah.
And then it's, who's going to pay for it?
Okay, I just wondered, so that is part of our consideration?
That's going to be part of our consideration, yes.
But now, at this time, the county really can't, because they got it for like a, whatever it was, so they cannot turn around and really sell it to anybody, right? Except for maybe the city.
Well, Sempra got it for a dollar.
Yeah, Sempra bought it under state law for a dollar for the development of affordable housing, which is allowed under state law.
So they might have to go to the state legislation and see if they can slide it through some way.
There may be some legislative actions that might be a part of this redevelopment plan. The way that we reached agreement last week was, from our standpoint, it's one thing to get rid of our streets, to get rid of our easements, to get rid of our public interests, but the question is what's going to follow after that? And so what the HRA and their attorneys are saying is, let's clean up the history, and then let's replat areas that we want to replat, rights of ways that we need to replat, and let's see what we have. So I mean, it's, to the HRA's credit, southeast Minnesota HRA, I mean, they're spending a fair amount of money to do this, which is maybe good for us if we work with them to get to that final cleanup. If they didn't do it, I'm not sure Goodhue County would do it. I'm guessing we probably wouldn't do it, so what we see is what we get forever.
Pumpkin.
And the HRA stepping forward, to their credit, to say, "Let's try to fix this."
Goes back to a meeting we had last winter with Sempra, and I think Joe Wheeler was still there at that time, and he came with a $750,000 bill. He said, "This is what the city's part is going to be, to clean up the utilities and the streets and all that." Considering Sandstone has cost this city so much money in the past, we just kind of...
It's a black hole if we don't go.
Let it go.
Bill as in invoice, not bill as, "Here's $750,000."
Exactly.
And they made the same request to Goodhue County, and Goodhue County said, "Now it's over and above the cost of just normal investment to get this property developed." That was all on top of, on top of. So we kind of said, hmm, maybe not. So it's going to remain a problem. The question is whether or not, if we go through this process with the HRA and county, it can be less of a problem. That's the question.
Well, at least we're working on it. Get the titles cleaned up, and then we'll kind of go from there and see what they come up with.
So would November 13 work for the council, or is there another date that might work? HRA and the county like to move this along as quickly as they can, but it's your call in terms of schedule.
That's a Wednesday?
That's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
That's okay with me.
I've finished confirmation several years ago, so I'm good. On Wednesday night.
Looks okay.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Steve?
Just one thing, and I'm sorry, Dave, to bring this up during the meeting, but how are we coming on the Jim Hurkey little debacle down there, drainage thing? I mean, is everybody stuck their heels in, and nobody's...
I don't know if Greg has gotten the topography yet. I know he was working with Johnson Schofield to get that, and I haven't seen Greg recently to know if he's gotten that. He continued, Greg continues to feel that with the topo that he thinks there is that there can be a modest solution to better manage the drainage, but it's got to be done.
Okay.
It's not done yet.
We're all agreeing that it's got to be done. We're just waiting for something.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
We've got a few drainage projects, you know, going.
Matt?
Nothing tonight.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Eric?
Nothing for me?
Nope.
I just want to, you know, mention briefly, you know, we were going to bring back Blaze Holden from Sustained back in September, and we didn't. I haven't got any complaints from, about Sustained. I don't know if you have down at City Hall, but people were calling me, and I haven't got any, which leads me to believe they've corrected their problem. And if that's the case, let's just leave it off the table and revisit it if something happens.
I think one time I brought up, I was approached by somebody that said they went for a run on like a Sunday night, and they went right by the place, and they didn't smell a thing, so they thought that it had been improved.
Okay, well, we'll leave them alone with the...
Corrected's a little strong. I think we're getting some management assistance with monitoring and correcting as they go.
Yeah, I think so. We'll just let it go, and if we have to revisit it, we will. Okay. That brings us to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. We've got a lot of people here tonight, so let's, we're going to be stringent on a three-minute rule. Public comments may be respect, must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Brenda?
Brenda Voschalek. I was up here and spoke once before, and I'm going to assume that when I talked to you then, you misunderstood me, because that's politer than thinking you just blew me off. I talked to you then about the police department, about budgets in general for the city, and I pointed out at that time, if you looked at the budgets and you looked at the totals, you were going to see some budgets that had some pretty high totals. And when you looked at the budgets that had really high totals, a couple of them have really high totals, because you've got people that are working 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. And if you sort that money out then, and figure that on a basis of an hourly basis, and figure out what those budgets are costing you per hour, and compare budgets hourly on what your budget costs for those 24-hour, 365-day-a-week people versus your budgets that you're paying for five-day-a-week budgets, then those extremely high budgets don't look so high. And yet, when you decide that you need to absolutely cut budgets, the only budget you pick, to ask to look at their budget, and they've got to cut, is the police department. You don't ask anybody else. And it has to make one ask why them, and why only them? Is it simply a matter of we're cutting budgets? Or is this a matter that we have something about the police department? And if this is simply a personality issue, then is it something that they're doing wrong? In which case, if it's something they're doing wrong, then either sit down with them and issue a correction order, give them a time to get corrected in what it is they're doing wrong, or if it's a personality issue and they're not doing anything wrong in their job, then get over it. I've worked in every public safety job here. I've been in administration, in the police department. I've been a police reserve. I've been on the ambulance. I do paperwork for the fire department. I know what it is to do those jobs. If you asked, all of those departments would let any of you ride along with them, sit in their offices, see what those jobs entail. Have any of you taken them up on those offers? Seen what it is to do those jobs? Know what it means to sit in that squad car? To be in that ambulance? To ride that fire truck? To answer those phones? To do that work? To have those responsibilities? Maybe instead of cutting down those individuals, we should be thanking them for the job they do. Maybe the fact that you don't have the crime is because of the job they do. Maybe if we concentrated more on how to increase our revenues, to bring more into this city, to grow the city, instead of nitpicking on what more we can cut, on whose budget we're going to cram down now, on who we're going to pick on, on who our next target is going to be, maybe morale would be a little bit better in this city. Thank you.
Sustained smelled one night very faintly.
Sure wasn't. Was it you?
Could have been my exhaust. I would like you folks to look these over.
Thank you. Oh, no. Shoot.
So anyway, I'm going to just try to take a little of the emotion out of it. I am here to support the Cannon Falls Police Department and their patrolmen. But I also am supportive of the mayor and the council, because they're looking into the administrative costs of the police department, and that was quite clear. Now, I sat here for 100 minutes dying to speak up, because it was redundant, the way that this went on and on and on for an hour and 40 minutes two weeks ago. It sounded as though some wanted the lieutenant and the chief to patrol, and you want the chief to come back with recommendations. He did immediately. He wanted to cut a patrolman. That's not what you asked of him. That's not what I want. I happen to be happy with the Cannon Falls Police Department and the patrolling of town. I do have problems with the administrative end of it, and in there, you're going to find some reasons why. The chief went on about Joe Berg's duties, scheduling, overseeing, investigation, administration. What is it that the chief does? And why don't we hear from the chief about what it is that he's doing? And when is he here? I've been trying to find that out for four years. When is he here? I would like to see a time card. I've been at Morris, do you recall? Almost four years ago, I called you and asked you. Can't find out. Why is that? Makes sense to me. The fact is, Joe Berg was making policy. The chief said, "He won't let me patrol." That's your job to make policy, not Joe Berg's. If you examine their job descriptions, they're almost identical. Why do we need two chiefs? Why are there two here when we're going through the budget? Why are there two in the office all week long and two gals doing administrative work? Do you know what that means? That means, in dollars and cents, that you're spending six times in the office for 40 hours a week than you are on the street with an officer. Do the math. If you'd also do the math, it is in excess of 50% administrative. We want more patrolmen. That's who protect us. That's what I want. I don't know what you want, but I think that's what you're getting at. The chief said, "Am I missing something here?" I couldn't hardly keep my tongue. He was missing everything. He wants to cut an officer. That's not what we want here, is it? It's not what I heard you say. Am I wrong? The chief said the other night, he didn't know what a mutual aid agreement is. Well, it's in his job description, as an essential function. I wasn't at the February 5 Police Commission meeting, but he explained to that commission, "I am told that it isn't necessary." Well, how could he know it's not necessary if he doesn't know what it is? And yes, we do need one, and we do need it with Dakota and Goodhue County. Last year, there were like 8,300 calls listed in the Cannon Falls Beacon and promoted on the Cannon Falls website or whatever it is. I'm not, I'm computer illiterate on purpose, and that's one of the reasons why. But when I contacted the county, a day later, it went off the city's website, and the county's numbers were substantially different. And I think there's a lot more paperwork going on here promoting the number of calls rather than just documenting what happens and get on with it. Cannon Falls PD assists other agencies annually practically 300 times a year. That's almost once a day. How many times do we get assistance from other agencies? Don't know. It's not documented, but that's a problem. We need to know what that is, and we need to rely on the county. I pay county taxes as a landowner in Cannon Falls, just as I do in the city of Cannon Falls. It's all the same. I still pay taxes to both. Last year, the chief of police went on like seven conferences. One of them was to FBI training. I was sitting here when it happened. It made it sound like it was the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Well, it's not. It has nothing to do with the FBI as we know them. It's some party going on in Quebec, Canada. Couple thousand dollars in expenses, in excess of. You really think that's necessary? And what about all this training? And Joe goes to the police chief convention annually, or has more than once that I'm aware of. And I think you're a certified fire marshal, aren't you? And I think you're a certified fire marshal, aren't you? Well, it's just a rumor. I don't have the fact there. I heard you went to fire marshal school, so whatever. All I'm saying is that we should have the mandatory training and the training that is required, but this other stuff, come on. And it's your job to look into it, not mine. We had a tornado in which the chief was here immediately after, so that we could get overtime paid to non-exempt employees, to exempt employees, exempt from overtime, yet we're paying them overtime. Well, we had to do that, didn't we? We had to turn it into FEMA. Where's our money? Anybody know? Has anybody inquired? Why am I the guy asking? Why aren't you asking? Nobody here seems to understand what I'm talking about. Where's our money? Well, when we find out where it is? Why isn't it turned in? It's not even submitted, to my knowledge, or it wasn't as of a couple of weeks ago. We have a security detail going on at the winery by our police department. We're supposed to be monitoring alcohol distribution in the winery and policing it. Why are we providing security and it's not approved?
Mayor, I believe we've hit three minutes. I think there's other people that would like to speak. And babe, thank you for your time.
You gave Brenna some extra time. We'll give.
Well, how much extra?
Hey. It's okay.
I'm just asking.
Hey, Matt, 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 I get it, okay? I get it. Matt, Matt, believe me, I get it. I get it.
And thank you for your information.
Well, it's not a problem. Thanks for your time. Anybody else, public input?
Joe Shariak, 220 Middle Street West. I just wanted to say, one, Mr. Mayor Altough, I kind of voted for you under the aspect that both your sons were in EMS and that you would kind of protect them, not take them down. I've been here for 13 years. These guys know where the hotspots are in this town. They know who to watch after, who the troublemakers are. My kids know them, and they protect them. So I don't understand why you guys are looking at to cut their budget. They're the first ones on every emergency medical scene, and I don't understand that. So that's basically what I wanted to say. I just don't understand this whatsoever. So thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
John Grimes. I was shocked to hear the city council asking Chief McCormick and Lieutenant Berg to give them numbers on what a 5% to 15% budget cut may look like. Chief McCormick made it very clear, a cut of that size would be staff with the Cannon Falls Police Department. The council said they weren't looking to cut any officers, but still asked the chief to look at cutting those percentages from his budget. I'll reiterate what the chief said. That would be a member of the Cannon Falls Police Department. It's concerning to know the city has not asked any other department within the city to look at making cuts to their budget. If the council moves forward with the cuts to the Cannon Falls Police Department, they're putting the residents of Cannon Falls at risk, along with the fine men and women of the Cannon Falls Police Department. I don't know exactly what this council is planning on, but they've made it very clear it will only involve the Cannon Falls Police Department. I just want to throw a scenario out to the council, and it's actually funny because according to Lieutenant Berg, this just happened last week. You wake up, it's 2:00 a.m., you wake up, 20-year window is breaking. You tell your significant other to wait outside, wait in the bedroom while you check it out. As you check on your kids, you see a person walking, walking in the darkness of your house. Think about how terrifying that is. You've got your wife, your kids, and some unknown person at 2:00 a.m. inside your house. You lock yourself in with your kids, tell your significant other to lock the bedroom door, you call 911 and wait for the officers to arrive. You wait and wait, but nobody shows. After 25 minutes, 25 minutes, you hear sirens, you wonder why it took so long, and later find out why. As a result of these cuts, only one officer works nights now. Unfortunately, that officer was in the county jail at Red Wing processing a driver for DWI. As we heard, Goodhue County's tied up on a pursuit. So who are you going to call? Dakota County? Their populated metro county who are just as busy, not busier than Goodhue? Do you call Zimbroda? Red Wing?
Goodhue.
Had the city not made the cuts, response would be in a few minutes. Unfortunately, you're waiting for a deputy who came from Pine Island or wherever they may be coming from. I could give more scenarios, but I won't. I hope this one scenario is more than enough for the council to realize the cuts could have more consequences than intended. Chief McCormick and Lieutenant Berg have done an excellent job with this police department. The council is setting the chief, his department, and this city up for failure. The safety of the residents and the officers need to be a priority with this council. If the council is looking to make cuts, they need to start looking at all the departments in the city and not just the Cannon Falls Police Department. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just want to be clear to start with, I am not in favor of cutting the police department's budget, but let's look at some numbers. Cannon Falls has eight full-time officers, and looking at the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Statistics for 2018, that's cities in our peer group, as defined by the BCA, have an average and median of eight officers as well. So it looks like we're pretty right-sized in Cannon Falls. Putting this another way, Cannon Falls has two officers per thousand residents, the same again as the median city for our peer group. Cutting any officers, including Jeff or Joe, would bring that down, and we would be, in my opinion, understaffed and, according to the BCA statistics, understaffed. Looking at some other statistics, public safety spend for cities in our peer group range from $126 to $608 per resident. Cannon Falls spends about $347. While that's slightly above the median and the average, that's well below the $608 maximum spend for cities in our peer group. Looking at the Cannon Falls police budget, I know it was discussed at the working session that we're started, you wanted to start with the 2019 budget. Well, that's not a relevant number to start from because there are $50,000 in approved personnel increases. This is something that's, I believe, was negotiated with the union and isn't negotiable at this point anymore. So your relevant starting number for decreasing the 2020 budget, if cuts are made, is the 2019 number plus $50,000. If you wanted to keep flat at a 0% change from 2019, that's a cut of $50,000, that's an officer. Whether that's on the street or Jeff or Joe, that's an officer. Looking at the budget more in depth, from 2016 to 2020, other than personnel costs for the police department, every other line item in total, looking at that total, has stayed flat since 2016. There's been no substantial increase in expenses, which is actually pretty impressive and surprising considering inflation every year is generally around 3%. That could imply that Jeff has saved the city $15,000 to $20,000 over the last four years, just by keeping those other expenses flat. From my perspective, the police budget appears reasonable and fair. We'd all like to see total spending decrease in the 2020 budget. I don't want to see any more taxes. You don't want to see any more taxes. And I like to, and we'd all like to minimize the taxes, the additional taxes that we're going to get, because there's going to be some. But I don't think the police department is the correct area to go looking for cost savings, at least not substantial cost savings. Let's find some other areas to cut that aren't essential services. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you guys get any numbers of what these guys are making?
What, who guy, which guys are making?
The chief and Joe. Maybe those should be looked at. It is a big administration fee. Why are we paying to, to do a one-person job? You know, this town isn't a big crime or troublemakers. We can usually figure out who most are. It doesn't take a genius. I also would like to say, you know, with, you had mentioned in the beginning of the year, oh, this town's a laughing stock. Well, it sure has turned into one. We don't have one department that is running smooth. We don't have a public works person. We don't have other staffs. I've lost my train of thought there. I just think with all the chaos that's going on, we all need to sit down as a community, as a council, set all the games aside, let's let all the bullshit be done, and let's work together as a community and build, you know? Let's get our public works working. Let's get people that'll sit down. You can't even get the chief to sit and talk to the council. How is that? He is supposed to sit and be a representative, and he won't sit and talk to any of you guys? That's absurd. To me, fire him. You know, let's trim the fat. I get, you could get a cheaper one.
That's true.
Sam Jennings, 604 Almond Street, Cannon Falls. Just want to say that, you know, our police department does an awesome job. Everybody in the community can agree that they've done an excellent job here in town. Our crime rates are low, they're friendly, they're not, people aren't afraid of our police department, do a lot of community outreach and things they don't even get paid for. Going after, you know, public servants like that, that don't get paid enough to begin with, and then to talk about cutting budgets and going after them directly first and foremost, does nothing for morale in this community. And your departments are already, you know, having issues. Each department is having issues. To just hammer your police department's morale with talk like this does nothing good for the community at all. You know, your public budget just for, city council's $40,000, you each take home $2,500 a year, and you're talking about cutting, you know, police department salaries and letting people go. $22,000 goes to a check to each of you every year. I haven't seen anybody offer that money up yet before cutting a police officer. Seeing you guys put some skin in the game for your own budget, you know, would mean a lot to this community, I think, and to the police department and for morale of this town. Just really wish you guys would just, you know, think about it, think carefully. Fiscal responsibility, long-term, is something this town really, really needs to focus on. Building business, building tax revenues, and it's just long-term fiscal responsibility, not short-term, long-term. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Levesque, 300 Pine Street. Let's think about the students that go to our aerial schools. What's the response time when Goodhue is going to get the call? Cannon Falls can probably be there in three minutes. Goodhue, they're in White Rock. How long is it going to take them? I have medical issues at home with four to three dollars, three daughters, including myself. If they get hurt by any means, Officer Joe Berg knows, and the other men and women sitting here know how fast they have to respond when they get a phone call to 300 Pine Street. Let's keep the force going. We need them 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anybody?
Yep, somewhere else.
My name's Joe Girdon. I live at 1221 Sixth Street North. Some of the things that might get overlooked by a lot of citizens in this town is the amount of outside our community crime that gets picked up in Cannon Falls. I drove for a tow company in town for a few years, and I got to deal with the aftermath of all them crimes that happened in our community. One of them that stands out was a theft that came as a pursuit through town. You know, you don't, you can't really look at just the crimes that happen in town, but the surrounding areas, because those people are coming through Cannon Falls. Cannon Falls is the trail toe everywhere in the outer area around here. They come into Cannon Falls. I got to deal with people that were arrested for drugs and, you know, they were from Brooklyn Center or some other big city, but we're on 52, so we're going to see all that riffraff from the bigger city. So by cutting another police officer, you're just opening up the door for more of that to stay here and them to opportu, make the opportunity to, for them criminals to come and target one of us. But I could go on about stories that I know of things that happened that a lot of people don't know. I know a Home Depot truck that got stolen outside of town, but they were in town that night. I seen the truck. So, I mean, that came from Brooklyn Center, around the highway. You can't compare our budget and calls to towns our size that are not on a highway, a major corridor from Rochester and beyond, and the cities and beyond. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I'm not real good at public speaking, so this is making me nervous. Ashley Evans, I'm local, I live right down the street there. I'm a victim services advocate for Goodhue County. I worked primarily out of the high school and middle school, and I can't speak about budget. I know nothing about budget, but the impact that these men and women have on your children here is huge. I work with kids who have been abused in Cannon Falls, in our very safe, very small town. So when people say that violence doesn't happen here, we're safe, that's sure, true, but it is happening here, and I see it every day. But I can rely on Joe and Mitch and Jill and Paul and Christine and all of these officers, and I know that they're going to help my kids get somewhere safe. I know that I can pick up the phone and call and talk to Bonnie or Karen and get an officer to that school in five minutes, whenever I need them. And if you cut that, it's, I can't guarantee that our kids are going to feel as safe if they don't have these connections. I have kids that were terrified, that have grown up terrified of cops because they've been in and out of their home all the time. I had kids that won't speak to them, and now they know them by name. They, when something bad is happening, they want to call a certain officer because they've worked with them and they have that relationship. I've done their ride-alongs. I've worked on cases with them. This, this group of officers back here, this team, is like nothing else I've ever seen. I've worked in Red Wing. I've worked with the PD down there. I've worked with the Goodhue County Sheriff's Department. I lived up north. I've worked with officers there. The connection that these officers and this team has built in this community is like nothing I've ever seen before. And I'm young, I haven't seen a lot, but I don't think you're going to find this anywhere else. And when we start cutting that back and when we kind of lose some of that connection, it's not only going to impact the community, it's going to impact those kids that need them and those kids that rely on them, and I need them. I need them to do my- I need them to do my job, to make sure that my kids, my 30, 40, 50 kids that I've seen these last three years are safe. So, we need to keep them. You guys can't, we can't do this.
Anybody else?
I'm Patricia Reed, wife of Michael, mother of five. My youngest has Down Syndrome. He went missing in May, and some of the police officers came to my home, and we had a safe return of our boy, even though he was missing for 70 minutes. And I have friends who are police officers in Minneapolis. I know former sheriff Scott McNorland. The weight that these officers feel for the jobs that they perform and just how it affects their families, they need our support, and I pray that you will support them and be there for them. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public input?
I think mine will fit in quite nicely with what's all going on. There's going to be some hard acts to follow, but I'm Guy Wiltz, and I'm the project manager for Shire Construction. And I was here a mere 13 months ago, fighting to stop misleading and inaccurate information. You guys were all sent an email today, and I'm trying to do the same thing again. You all got an email from my lawyer, including the city administrator. The, I've been trying to get to the mayor and the city administrator to contact me back, and they will, won't. They send me the same emails over and over, requesting the same information that I've sent them and sent them. I'll give you a little background. We're trying to build a house at 116 Limestone Drive. When we decided to hook up 108 Limestone to the house, there was an inch and a half sewer line servicing that house. I don't know if you guys know much about sewer lines, but that's not acceptable. SCH, Greg Anderson's company, designed it. Cannon Falls approved it. At that time, we could not hook a house up to that. It's not acceptable. So we discussed it with your then-public works director, and between him, Greg Anderson, they designed putting in a new line. So Shire Construction, out of their own money, paid two right-of-way permits, dug, took a sidewalk out, chiseled into a manhole, ran a six-inch line to an acceptable place where they just told us, and ran a four-inch line the rest of the way and hooked up 108. Three weeks ago, we submitted a permit for building a new house at 116. Three weeks ago, I'm getting the runaround for not getting it approved. It's been forwarded onto the county, but it's unapproved to the county. And so it was designed by your city public works director, approved by the city public works director with guidance from him. And so now you won't approve it. And a lot of the talk tonight is about budget. I think a good way to get money in is houses. But if we have to fight and get lawyers to build a house? I mean, you've got signs that say, welcome to Cannon Falls. You don't mean that. You don't want people to move here. You want to hassle people to try to move here. I'm asking, none of the issues that I've heard tonight can wait. We have people that are probably 70 years old, are waiting to get in their new house. They can't because we don't have a permit. You guys are all the boss of the city administrator. That's why you guys got the letter. I get nowhere getting there. I don't know where else to go. I need this approved. I need the permit back so we can start digging. We were going to dig a week ago. I didn't know it was held up. I called three times in one day, no answer. I sent three emails one day, no response. I don't know. You guys got a suggestion? Something you can answer, if you want. I mean, it appears that you guys don't want houses here, and everybody wants money here. Should be easy to figure it out.
I mean, we can't, we can't do on public input, we can't comment.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Oh, I didn't know that. You just listened.
Or I would have responded to half a dozen people here, didn't I?
So it's been raised many times by the same email, they need proof. We have submitted proof. We have said, produced, designed approval, a map, photos. We don't know what else to get. Now you recommend it needs to be televised, dug up, a tracer wire installed. Who's paying for that? It's not our land. You guys probably, huh? That's budget money, which I'm hearing is none. So, you know, I just, I don't understand the issue with this. And I know you guys can't comment. I didn't know that till this now. But if you guys could take five minutes tomorrow and discuss it so it can be forwarded on, so we can get a permit to get a house built, do you get residents? They spend money here? Taxes go up? Are taxes, they get your tax money? We got one going right now, probably a $700,000 house. That's, that should be some taxes for the city, isn't it? Why do we have to fix something that's not broke? The sewer line was approved by you guys, by the city, not you guys, the city. And now we're trying to hook up to that, but approved by the city, and we can't. Or at least let us start building the home until you guys decide if you want to dig it up, and you want to put a tracer wire in it, you want to reestablish the lawn that you take out, you want to replace the sidewalk you rip out, or you can let us hook up to something that's already been approved. A very smart person told me once, if you don't know what you're looking at, quit looking at it. And so I just, I just don't know. I'm frustrated. I'm very frustrated. And we have some 70-year-old homeowners that are frustrated. They have a new house. They sold their house. They're going to be homeless. I don't want to be homeless, and I'm 60. They're 70-some, and they're going to be homeless. So I'm just asking, I think by letting us build houses would solve some of the problems that a lot of people are complaining about. And you guys maybe have an easier job. So I'm just asking if you could do me a favor tomorrow and look into, to do something about to get this permit issued. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public input? Public input? Third and final call, public input. Seeing none, we'll close the public input. Take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Morris?
I'll second.
Bill? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.